States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Haga, here. Alderman Couch, here. Alderman John Stupi, here. Alderman Jokers, here. Alderman Hook, here. Alderman Donnie Stupi, here. Alderman Prince, here. Alderman Ross, here. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the revised agenda, everybody's got? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna have the personal appearances. Channel 798, board member Gary Whitenor will present Channel 798 quarterly report.
I don't stand in front of a flag this time. But I am Gary Whitenor, my chair of the 798. And our pleasure is to be an equal board member. And lawfully, he's our chair of 798. And now, I know some of you have seen him already. He does a lot of videoing out there in the field. Okay? And we have two others that are out here. Kish Johnson, she's our secretary. And the other one is Karen Hirsch. She was there until then. What we talked about, we talked a bit about Martin, about possibly making a report, quarterly report to you all about what we do down there at 798. We, of course, have, you know, three new members that's probably never been downstairs. And we have a few members that's called by, but it's not room to take a good look and see what we do. We have been in a transition to improve and update our equipment and our broadcast video. So, what I did was, I thought make it real simple, is to show you. Okay, that's our presentation, 798. We've come a long ways from what we used to do. And we keep drawing and expanding. We have updated our equipment. Most of the equipment that we've had in the past is so obsolete, it came back partially. So that's why we threw grants, we had grants, and donations and contributions that you all made. This is what we're using for. Of course, we'd like to expand a lot more, but we don't have the luxury of doing all that. There's other studios all over the country. I know one, they have a budget of like one or two million dollars. There's just a way of anything like that. But this is all volunteer. Nobody gets paid a dime except for our manager, and that's Doc. And he gets paid fifteen thousand dollars a year. Everything else is free, gratis. And we're always looking for people that would like to volunteer to help cover more of the events that's happening in the community. So if, I guess, without further ado, if you all have any questions, or we'd love for you to come down and see our studio and actually participate in it. It would give you a better knowledge of what we do and what it takes to do a presentation, a visual presentation to the community. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayoral. Mayor?
Yeah.
Monthly meetings are where?
Second to, or fourth Tuesday of every month downstairs. And you're all welcome. The public, it's open to the public as well.
Did I let? Sure. Okay, so Martin, run your report.
Okay. The first item, I received an email from the Department of Transportation who is reviewing the revisions to the plans that were necessitated because on the downtown hiking trail, because we had to remove the parking lot. And the comments were, like seventy-six of them. Some of which I don't understand, some of which they explained to me have to do with changes in the regulations since this project was started. ADA regulations changed. The minority participation for the city changed from zero to five percent. And there's a whole laundry list of things that the bid specifications, which they had on file, have no longer appropriate. So I forwarded it on to Joe Gable and Taylor Engineering, saying, you know, we're already expecting engineering money. And, you know, some of this is stuff that, you know, you could probably easily change. Some of it appears to me was stuff that should have been changed before. So he's reviewing it, and he's gonna get back to me. If they take the position that some of this is new engineering, then we're gonna have to go back to MODOT and say, hey, you need to amend the contract to cover the engineering. And they've indicated their willingness to do so. It's just another delay in this perpetual project. Sandra and I attended an event where the Master Gardeners gave us a thousand dollars for updating the landscaping at the Welcome Center. I hope when she gives her report, she will explain to you what she intends to do with that. The MODOT Advisory Commission meeting on this project I've been telling you about, the state's been trying to do to prioritize projects within each MODOT district for funding if the sales tax, proposed sales tax passes. They finalized the priorities, and the number-two priority was the multimodal work for the New Bourbon Port. So that's very high on the regional priority setting. Since the Planning and Zoning Administrator's departure, we've been busy trying to figure out what all that stuff was that was in her workspace. We've gotten through it. We think we've got everything kind of identified and where it belongs and what we need to do with it. I've spent most of this week preparing for the next Landmarks meeting. You know, when you haven't done a staff report for landmarks, it's kind of a learning experience for me, but it's been a good one. I've realized some things were needed to be changed. Without being critical, I'd like to say Brenda was perhaps over-cautious. The Landmarks meetings are evidentiary meetings. They do have founding of facts. She tended to reprint the city code as part of every staff report that she produced, which really isn't necessary. So I've made some revisions in the landmark reporting process that'll save us at least paper, if not time. The, I distributed earlier a proposed announcement for the position. My expectation, my intention is to advertise, to see kind of who's out there that may be able to do this job. And once I get a sense of what the market has to offer us, to make some final decisions on how we're going to restructure it. I can tell you that at least one decision has been made, and it will be a less autonomous position than it has been. I expect to be a more active participant in the decision-making, although I will expect to hire someone who's capable of doing the day-to-day work and the administrative tasks expeditiously. Because if you leave it to me, it takes a week. But who is it gonna be? And I don't know, it's gonna have to wait and see who's out there for the funds that are available for us. And I wanna discuss that description. What I'd like for you to do is, if you have any comments on it, just please let me know after the meeting or tomorrow. You know, Alderman Couch has already made a comment, and I will amend it as however you think it needs to be amended. Dave will report on the status with the dura patch machine. I think, at the time that I wrote this, the oil was not available to us, and so we got the company to agree to kind of shift the contract period. But there's an update on that, I believe, that he can provide you when he gives his report. And finally, I went to a meeting before she was an alderman. That sent me a information that I've kind of already seen on some Conservation Department grants that for tree, it looked like planting. So I went to the pre-grant conference last night, and it turns out they will fund planting, but it's their absolute lowest priority. So only if they have money left over do they give you planting. What they want you to do is use this money to do an inventory of your trees, which we kind of did with a volunteer group of citizens. And then, but they'll pay for a professional to come in and do that and advise you what you should plant, where you should plant it, and how you should do it. And that was kind of where we, that committee, got to. And then we kind of like, we weren't sure where to go after we figured out which trees we needed to deal with. So it's likely I'll be preparing for June 1st submission, a grant for designing a tree replacement and maintenance program for the downtown area. Then we can talk about its implementation. It's a sixty-forty grant, but they give you full credit for the soft match, so we won't have any problem, we won't be out of pocket on this, but we will provide staff time and volunteer support and be able to meet our match. No questions? Thank you.
Okay, right into Dave's report. Hello, Dave.
Congratulations, board members. Looking forward to working with you. Questions on Martin's report?
There's some comment on kind of how the normal schedule of things that people anticipate, like spring breaks, it's not being done as it has in the past. Would you kind of cover what the competing demands are for your staff time and how you're feeling?
Yes, I can. We've been trying to get as much, many holes patched as we possibly can. And with the bad weather, and now we're, this week, we've been trying to get caught up on the mowing. And, you know, I got a guy out on vacation, and we're breaking Bruce Joggers in on the sweeper, and he's been out a couple times in it. And today, he went out on solo, and yes, I feel he's qualified, or he wouldn't have been out in it. I know there was concerns on that. But he's doing a real good job. He caught on quick. I got ahold of the salesman that sold us, and he came down for an hour and a half and went through the whole sweeper with Bruce, so I feel a couple of that. We've been trying to get the lines painted as we can go through, but basically, we've been trying to get as much patching done as we can because we knew the dura patcher was coming. And I canceled the dura patcher this week because of the fact that we couldn't get all. They didn't get all in till today, and they didn't even call me. So they said it's either gonna be Thursday or Friday when they go get it. So, but they didn't get the all, St. Francis County is where we're getting it from. They didn't get the all because of the cold weather last week.
But your expectation is that the oil will be in yet this week?
Yeah.
And that we'll be able to begin work sometime next week?
Yes. Actually, then, with this event, came, come up this weekend, we had to put a tent up today. And tomorrow, we gotta get chairs and everything. And my plans are go out and get the dura patcher, and possibly, since I have to get the oil, and that way it's full, and Monday morning, if it don't rain, we'll start Monday morning.
The, he mentioned to me, he called, we usually hire summer help through workforce. They don't go on our payroll. And he approached workforce about getting some people early so we can get caught up. And they said those people aren't available generally because they're in school. But they did have someone who I think we'll be able to bring on early, who only can work part-time.
Twenty hours a week.
Yeah, he's older, more experienced than the kids we normally get during the summer. So hopefully, we'll be able to catch up here in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, he's only allowed to work twenty hours, but that'll help me a bunch because it's gonna take four of us on that dura patcher. And I plan on being on it every day, so that way we can get the guy out there, and, you know, if he, twenty hours a week, will help us a bunch on the mowing.
Why four? The demonstration that I saw, I thought the guy said it could be done with two men.
It can be done with two men, but if we're gonna play the safety game, I need two people to flag traffic because I got one in the truck and one back there by himself, and, you know.
It's not the machine, it's the traffic.
Oh, no, no. One man can operate the machine, but, you know, one man don't wanna operate it all day.
Hope we play the safety game every day.
We do. Thanks to you. Go ahead.
Now, where the slurry seal was put down, I know there's some holes there. Is that their responsibility to fill those holes, or is it?
Well, that was actually because of road deteriorated. And so we're gonna be going through that. Actually, I got ahold of the guy, Steve Jeffs, and he called me, and he liked, or I called him, and anyway, he's planning on May 12th, something like that. But it depends on the weather.
I thought it was the second, but it's 12th?
12th. Now, I got better news. When I got home, I got a phone call from, I don't know if you probably remember, whenever Missouri Patrol come down and did a survey of all the streets? Well, this Pat Palmer. We asked him if he'd come down and do it again. They said, well, they only do it once. Anyway, he called me today, and he said he'd like to come and have a talk with me and Martin. And I said, well, and he said his boss, who is the vice president of Missouri Patrol, wants to come down and talk to us. I said, well, what about some of the board members too? And he said, fine. So he wants to come down Monday. So it was, what time would be a good time Monday? They wanna explain what happened and what they can do to help us, or what they're gonna do to help us. And they basically said, we're not gonna allow them to come down here and do that unless the temperature stays above forty degrees, day and night. He said the last time when they did it, it should have been two days being closed down instead of the few hours was because the temperature dropped so quick. So they're kind of wanting to come down and say, hey, you know, we're gonna do what we can to help you.
Maybe you might wanna know how I turn our city pretty well for that meeting.
Well, be whatever time you set up for Monday.
Afternoon would be best for me. I don't know about anybody else.
After four.
Well, that's okay.
You know, they, it seems like there's a difference between what happened here and what happened downtown. I mean, certainly in downtown, there was, obviously, we had some issues where there's some thin spots.
Yeah.
Not with it popping up.
No.
It was just some thin spots. And then here, we had it with popping up. But when they can't, when they did Fourth Street, they did Third Street between Market and Merchant, and it's fine. There's no, there's really no issues with it popping up.
That's what they wanna come and try to explain. There could have been, you know, something wrong with the emulsion and everything. So they wanna come and explain all that and basically tell us, you know, hey, because the guy told me, he said he read all my emails, and he's like, he said, look, he said, I apologize, he said, but we wanna do it right. So they're trying to, this company is a good company, so they wanna make it right for us. But they don't wanna come down, you know, like last week, he said, I could've came down, but he said it was cold, which, you know, we know that. We stood out while Gary got married.
Right. I don't wanna, I don't want him to come down if it's looking like, absolutely, if it's looking like it's gonna be cool. If we gotta wait, you know, we waited this long, if we gotta wait till June to make sure it's nice and hot, and that's, if that's part of the issue, well, that's, you're right.
Well, the only thing to remember is that basically, they wanna do this and downtown all at one time while they're here.
They can't do it one day.
You know, that's what they wanna do. So that's why, like I say, Monday, we can talk to them.
We need to talk about that.
Took all day to do this, last time.
Shutting down Fourth Street and downtown all in the same day.
I know, that's gonna be impossible.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
What I want from them is the day they're coming. I wanna know when they're gonna come, when they're gonna make good on their product or their service that didn't hold up, and what day they'll be finished. I don't care if it's in August. I just wanna know what day they're coming.
But what if they say June 1st, and then it rains on June 1st, and they can't do anything?
Well, I understand that, but we give them a window, maybe.
How about the middle of August?
Or the 5th, or whatever. But they need to get here and get this done.
Mayor?
Yes?
Part of the problem, and I'll address this to David also, is part of the problem is, is the street that bad underneath there? Is that what the problem is? The streets deteriorate underneath the?
Rick, they came and looked at everything, and said their product would work. So their product didn't work.
There is a problem. And this was supposed, that whole street section, you know, it needs to be replaced. This was just gonna buy us a year or two.
Couple more years, yeah.
And I don't think it was the base that caused this problem. I think it was, it just didn't adhere. The pine coat didn't stick. I don't know why it didn't stick. It didn't stick.
Well, where the holes are at, that's base failure there. But, you know, all the spots where it peeled up, yeah. That's why they wanna explain, you know, about the emulsions and stuff, there could have been something in there that, you know, caused contamination, and, like I say, I can't explain it.
Who cares? We just wanna fix it.
Yeah, well, that's what they, you know, they're-
They're saying they're coming down Monday, right?
Yeah, they're, not to work on-
Come down to whoever wants to attend.
Talk to us, so we can tell them our homes and our requests. What time they wanna do this Monday? I mean, must be a good time for people to meet with them. What time do they wanna come down Monday?
They're waiting on, they're pretty well saying it's up to you guys. They'll come down whenever you want them.
What do you think, Mayor? I mean, well-
Yeah, sure.
So you wanna do a morning or afternoon, or?
Afternoon would be better.
What time they come down and talk?
Pick a time. Are we gonna walk this project with them, or are we gonna sit in here and do this?
Either way.
Because Monday, it's gonna rain. Well, there's not much walk, they got a bad job and a bad product. They're gonna explain to us why, which I don't care why. I wanted to explain to us what time, what day and what time they're coming back to fix it, what day it'll be fixed.
I think they're basically wanting to come down, apologize, and, you know, kind of make amends and let you know that they're gonna fix it.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Good.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
All we need.
Here?
Hey, Dave, when somebody's water main breaks, like you're at Fifth and Market, they're by Cemetery, and Pine and Park, where do we stand on them? I mean, is that kind of a priority?
I'm trying to get to them as fast as I can. You know, it's, like I said, we got a four-man crew, so we're trying to do the best we can. We're jumping all over the place. We fixed one of the main breaks on, well, we went up on Fourth Street and to get that done around that curve, then we went down on the Biltmore, since we're so close. So, yeah, we've been trying to keep rocking until we can get it, but it's, Donnie, it's mostly the weather.
And for anyone who's listening, because we get a lot of calls from people saying, don't forget my street, don't forget my street. We're not gonna forget any street. You know, but we can, kind of take them, we've established kind of the highest priority areas, which we're gonna do first, and then we're gonna start one end of town and work our way through to the other.
My plan is to start up on Fourth Street, you know, from Riverview and- My plan is to start up on Fourth Street, you know, from Riverview and work to Biltmore. And then we're gonna run out to-
Parkwood.
Either, yeah, Parkwood, then we're gonna go to Cedar and Park. And then kinda, you know, we just got so many, where do you start and where do you stop? So after that, we're just gonna kinda start at the north end and just walk our way across town.
Well, we basically have thirty-six miles of path you can do this on.
We do.
Hey, you put in there a couple of times, you wanna, you patched holes at Point Base and you patched holes over on Scott. What, what exactly are you doing to patch these holes?
Well, over on Scott Street, we had a water issue between two houses. It was backing up, getting in their basement. So we, we cut out a sidewalk and we put a plate of metal on it where more water would come out because of the fact that the road's higher than the drain. So we made it wider so it, it would come out because we can't lower the street. And then, where was you, Owen?
Point Base.
Point Base, we went out there with some asphalt and tried to patch, but we patched today. Tomorrow, there's more holes.
So the whole road is crumbling up?
Yeah.
Yeah, but to me, aren't you guys just kinda digging them out and putting rock in there too or on some of them?
No, just that big hole, we put the rock in. But then it, it was that crawfish mud and it just kinda floats like this. So that's why we keep it barricaded, 'cause you can't drive on it. That's why when I came back and told Martin, I said, that's too big for us to repair. Because some of the spots, when we dug it out, was two inches thick and some of it was eight inches thick.
So what are we doing at Oak, I think it's Oakwood, is this, that runs next to the bank at the, at the street?
Parkwood.
Parkwood. What are we doing with Parkwood?
Parkwood, a couple of, the roads can be covered under the Tiff because they support the commercial center. But, so Parkwood to Point Base i- is eligible. And then Point Base from Parkwood to M is eligible. But beyond Point Base is beyond the interest of the shopping center. And that's just something we're gonna have to do, you know, just like anything else. We just gotta, you know-
So what needs to be done to get these streets fixed?
That would be a-
Somebody winning the lottery and-
Yeah, a remove and replace issue.
Actually, Teddy, we go out there with a little hand blowers. And when we go to blow the hole out, you know, and make it clean, so we put the asphalt in, it just keeps popping. It just busts. The concrete's just deteriorating. The only thing we're doing now is just making it where people can drive on it. Uh, when we go out there with a dirt patcher, you know, that's gonna have more pressure than our little blower. So we're just gonna try to put some oil in, a rock in, and get it smooth enough to drive. I don't know what else to do with it. I mean, the concrete's shot.
It's all we can do with the money we got.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't use the Tiff money, some of the Tiff money for that?
Not, not, and get, not go really without, not going really any farther than what the streets that he was talking about. It won't work. Anything else for Dave?
Hey, guys, did a good job. I totally appreciate all of it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're doing the best we can with what we have to do with. Thank you all. Y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, David.
Eric?
Good evening.
Evening.
All right. Um, I addressed a couple of things. If you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to, to answer those. We have extended a conditional offer to a, to an officer that's in the academy now. He is a St. Junif graduate. Um, he graduates middle of May from the academy and we're hoping to have him on the road shortly after that. I think it'll be a little after the seventeenth date that I've mentioned in the report. I think we're looking now for maybe the twenty-first. Uh, we did receive the, the grant as, as we've reported in the past for the generator. Uh, with the help of Jimmy Jones and Felix Meyer, the specs have been done and we're getting ready to put those out for bid, hopefully next week. So hopefully by the next staff meeting, I'll have, have that to report on. Be on the north side of our building. By the gas meter. It'll be a, a natural gas generator.
Hey, no, any, any gas interruption in an emergency, is it?
An earthquake would be the only issue that we would have with a gas interruption.
Police department would be an automatic switch over, but City Hall will be a manual.
In the event of an earthquake, that'd be, we'd have a lot. Of course, earthquake probably would never happen.
Yeah.
Wasn't that a different place?
Yeah, back when Ivan Browning was predicting an earthquake and New Adrick Paul, I had a water customer call me and ask me what revisions we'd made to hold the water tower up during an earthquake.
Oh, really?
Hey, our local schools-
You cleared our conference that would allow for us?
How many full-time officers do you have?
When we're at full staff, we're budgeted for ten full-time officers and I have one part-time police clerk. She's a full-time employee, but half of her salary is paid through the court. She's also a, a part-time court clerk. So it's kind of a dual, dual commission there. Uh, but ten, ten full-time officers.
How many on duty, I mean?
Uh, I don't know, get into that.
Yeah, we don't talk about that.
Right.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Steve, who's, uh, Ted Harris?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I'm taking Steve's spot tonight. His wife had a baby this week and so he's spending time with, with his family. Uh, you should have a-
Paternity leave?
Yeah. You guys should have a copy of the report that he generated to give to you. Couple of things that I, I would like to point out. Uh, I think on the very back page, I'll start to back, uh, from the way Pam had done these. That's your water loss indicator of the graph. Uh, the information that generates that graph is on the page in front of that. Uh, you can see there's a nice trend showing over the years that the water loss is getting better. Uh, the reason that I wanted to start there was just recently, uh, some of y'all are aware of the water leak. I think it was on Oakwood. Uh, it was a large leak. Uh, it was found, uh, due to some other circumstances. The city has purchased a camera to allow us to investigate some sewer issues. It's a push camera. Uh, staff was out investigating some sewer issues with the push camera and the jetter and stuff, and they found a water leak. They found water coming out of a line under the ground. Uh, it'd been leaking for, we estimate, years, as big as the hole was. I think, I think all of them stupid, come by and seen this. Uh, instead of surfacing, it was taking the soil, it was like a vacuum and pulling that soil into the sewer lines. And then it was washing it down, which is what caused the sewer issue. Uh, after fixing that leak, it reduced the operation time at the water plant by about an hour a day. Uh, that, that in turn computes to what I think right now to be about one percent more water leak, uh, water loss that was found from that leak. So, I mean, that, uh, I think the guys did a good job getting it taken care of. Uh, we thank you for purchasing the camera, which I think it was like eight thousand dollars. It's, uh, it's been, it's being used all the time for many things. And it, it was the primary reason we were able to find this water leak. Because it, it had never surfaced.
It's paid for itself already.
Absolutely. Yeah, it was, it was a great investment. I mean, the city's come a long ways in the last few years getting some, some good equipment. The guys really appreciated. Uh, we think that leak was something like forty gallon a minute, maybe forty-five gallon a minute. Around sixty thousand gallons plus or minus a day is what we estimate that leak. And again, if y'all seen the hole, that some of you did see, it's been leaking for years. Uh, nobody's fault. You know, it could've leaked for more years if, if it hadn't have plugged up the sewer line with the dirt that it had sucked out of the ground. Clay, clay tile line is what it was. It was, it was a cast iron water main. That will be on next month's report. I just wanted to touch base on it, uh, because this, this is data from March on here. So it'd, it'd be on the April, April data sheet. So, uh, that's all good news. You know, it's, it's going good. Uh, another thing I wanted to point out, uh, in our company, we have, we have taken another approach. We're, you know, on safety. It's, it's an important aspect of our job. And so, um, to the point that they hired a corporate safety compliance officer to, to keep up with some rules and regulations and some safety training. So our company now has a feature where we can get training online. We've purchased the time and, uh, multiple safety topics that we can touch base on. Uh, they're not gonna completely train the guys on safety, but it's gonna make them aware of some things that maybe you don't get aware of by reading manuals and reading, reading stuff. So it's a good tool. And again, as always, that stuff is available to any city staff that, that would wanna attend any of those safety meetings. So, and I wanted to touch base, I think later on in, in the meeting, you're gonna be looking at a bid for bio-solids removal. Uh, I would ask at the time that you look at that tonight, if you would consider doing two readings. Uh, and the reason for that is it's time-sensitive for agricultural use. These bio-solids need to be spread on land and the farmers only got a little window to allow us to do that. And we've been trying to get these prices for quite some time and we, we didn't receive any bids and, and so we had to rebid it and rebid it. And, and so if y'all would consider that, then I would answer any questions that you have when that comes up. Three questions?
One question on the camera there. You said that they had a problem on Cedar and Cherry?
Okay.
Where they dug up the lady's yard?
Okay.
And the power runs down the street further? Would the camera not have shown that or?
I can't, I, I, I don't have enough information to answer that. I could ask Matt if he knows anything about that.
The camera has a, about three hundred and five foot reach. Uh, the nearest manhole was three hundred and fifty feet away. Uh, so where the problem, we believe may have been located, we were not able to see. We couldn't get that far. It's, uh, it's, it's a line that runs possibly a buried manhole at an intersection further up that's been recovered by the streets at, at some point in the past. Um, it was just out of our reach. We did run the sewer jetter through there and it went past the house and came back. They did not bring back roots, which sometimes it will just poke through and come right back out. And I give it an indication, there was a blockage. So, uh, actually, shoes excavated the line and I believe they found some roots from the customer side.
I've, I've met with the property owner and they're gonna submit, uh, bills for the expenses that they've incurred and, and we'll submit those to the insurance company. And I'll keep you informed of the insurance companies' flush.
The, the camera is a, is a great tool, but it is limited. Like you said, I mean, it's, it's a push camera. It doesn't, it's not self-propelled and you, and you gotta push it up in the line and it will only go so far. Uh, I, I hope that's a satisfactory answer. I, I don't have enough more information.
The one that was covered up with street there, is that gonna be dug out? I mean, that probably wasn't three hundred and fifty feet.
You know, it-
That they patched over, I mean?
There's a manhole that's buried?
The map showed that there's a possibility there may be a manhole. And we did look for it. We took metal detectors and we actually even made a hole, probing over an area we thought it might be. And, uh, if, if it's there, it's deep. We'll actually have to excavate to try to find it.
What, what we can do is, you know, we can put that on a work schedule, try to push camera from both directions, see if they can find anything. And if not, when we do another, uh, scheduled camera work from a, from a company that can run cameras for five and six and seven hundred feet, we can put that on a list to try and find it. And if there is a manhole there, yes, it'd be raised up so we can access it. It's really nice when manholes are within three hundred feet. Once you get past three hundred feet, your, your jetter runs out of pressure. It doesn't have enough power to, to do a good job. Three hundred feet's kinda the normal. But over the years, when they're doing jobs, they wanna stretch them out to five hundred to save a couple of thousand dollars. And, you know, it works while everything's good, but, you know, twenty-five years later, it causes problems. So, but yes, we'll, I will have those guys take a look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
What would be the cause of the jump in the percentage of water loss for February as opposed to, everything seems to have been on a, on a downward trend. All of a sudden in February, was there some kind of break somewhere other than the, the Oakwood there or?
It, you have to look at, what do they have on February? They have forty thousand gallons per leak. Uh, it's on the bottom of the page.
Okay.
So when you start quantifying those numbers, leaks are guesses. All you can do is, is guess how big that leak was and what the duration of that leak is. Well, there's no meter. It's, it's a guess. And so that sometimes comes into it. And the other thing is February typically, uh, becomes a, a month that's a problem because there's less days in the month and the billing cycles run a, run a, run a different path. And so you might have had a, a, a shorter billing cycle and a longer water production cycle or vice versa. And so typically what you'll see is, is you'll see them bounce up and down. Some months you'll have a high water loss and the next month you'll have a low water loss. Because if you read meters, uh, say on a twenty-eight day cycle this period and a thirty-one day cycle next period, you still only make water on the same cycle. So sometimes that gets back and forth. And so you, the, the year-end number will be the accurate number. You might see a few that's high and a few that's low.
Okay, thanks.
And some guesses on water loss, uh, from, from leaks and flushing.
Okay, thank you.
Any others?
You can be contacted if you feel like you found a, I guess, infiltration issue?
Yeah.
Or like, well, ground, groundwater.
Yeah, if anybody, if, if anybody listening is outside when it's raining and they see water entering the ground through a, through a hole in their yard, they have a low spot or they see a spot in the ditch when they're out walking. And, and because you don't see this unless water's running. Anybody that sees that, yes, you can contact Water Department during business hours. Uh, there's, there's, there's another call that they could contact the county dispatch and just leave a message maybe. They could contact City Hall, uh, contact people however you can. And, and we can then look at that because, you know, it's, it's a large area and, and we'll do what we can. But if we don't know it's there, we, we can't do a lot about it. Sometimes we find those things through smoke testing, but, uh, you know, not always. Sometimes they just new, newly developed. So that'd be great if people would help us out. You know, it's one community. Anything else? Thank you.
Fire Department's report. Oh, yes.
I have a couple of questions for Tom from the fire, uh, fire department report.
States here that, uh, the ISO rating, uh, will revert to class five or six shortly after an audit. And then the next bullet, this will result in higher insurance premiums for everyone within the city limits of St. Junif. Is that an accurate statement? I, I was to understand that certain insurance companies, that doesn't matter.
From what we were told, and correct me if I'm wrong, at the last meeting that we had, that, I think that's a fairly accurate state. Um, I, I think you could, you could pretty much count on it. There is one insurance company that doesn't use it per se, but they do use that service. And it, it would be. Now, we, we're just talking before the meeting about scheduling another meeting, one more meeting of that committee to bring back a recommendation to this board so we can have a plan in place by that time, whatever that plan might be.
Where's Mick tonight? Why is he not here?
We ask Mick to come every quarter.
Yes. So he shows up every quarter?
Yeah.
Well, he just started, but, yeah. That's, he's supposed to make a quarterly appearance.
Yeah, I, I think that's what was pretty well said at the meeting was that, uh-
We have to ensure-
We, we have some, uh, more discussion as far as, uh, what our options are and how we present the options. Could maybe change that to the better, where maybe it doesn't-
You know, my main concern was if this, this statement is very direct and if it's not accurate, I would have a concern.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's more than just his personal thing based on the information we received from industry professionals in our, in our last meeting.
I just wanted to know, that's a very direct statement. And I, I, for some reason, I have, uh, recall hearing some, some things said that to the contrary.
I thought at one time, excuse me, I thought one time we were going to have that ladder truck looked at to see if there's any possible way it still could be in service.
That was one of the things, I, I guess we are still tinkering with that idea. I, without going into too much and saying it, it, it's evaluating whether it's worth putting any more money into or the other options that might be out there. And, uh, whether it be, I, I mean, and, and, again-
Look at a used, uh-
Look at a used, a used, a used truck, newer used truck or, or going back after a bond issue or taxes or, or whatever else. It was, I, I think that's really the, what's gonna come out of the next meeting. going to come out of the next meeting. So-
That's going to have to be it. Your next meeting, you're going to have to make-
Yeah, it is. And, and because ISO has told us that if we have a plan, that they will work with us as far as a plan goes, so.
Right.
Plus, I think we've exhausted the information collection-
Right.
-process. I mean, I think we've considered just about everything we, we can.
Yeah.
And that recommendation, coming back to you, you eight people may have a completely different idea of what that board's thinking, but at least I think they've, as Martin said, kind of beat it, we beat it to death and, and explored all the options, and here they are.
I don't think I said beat it to death.
Well, no, but we have.
As far as that committee, there's been a lot of odds put in by that committee. So that's, you know, that's, you've got to consider that for sure.
Okay, Sandra.
Well, I would like to say hello to the new board members. Would invite you to stop by the Welcome Center. There's a lot going on this weekend. We're always fairly busy. You have the information in front of you about the visitor counts on March, despite having a couple of really bad days in March with weather. We had some really good days, too. I think people were just so excited to get out of the house and get out and about and, you know, shake off that cabin fever. We had a 72% increase in March 2014 over March 2013, which was really exciting. And this weekend coming up, we have the Echol Dusel Dot, which Dave mentioned. This is a group that comes here to St. Genevieve every year. It also, they are reenactors, so you'll see them encamped down in the Jertifet campground. And they also host a series of seminars, informational seminars about history of this region that is of interest to not just reenactors, but also residents and tourists. So it is open to the public, and there is no charge. So if you'd like to learn a little bit more about the history of the region and meet some of these people who are visiting St. Genevieve for our cultural treasures and our historic treasures, you can see them over the weekend down at the Jertifet grounds. And you can also attend those sessions. We host those in the Welcome Center. And so we're very much looking forward to that. Tomorrow night is the Art Walk Night. This is the Fourth Friday Art Walk. This one Art Walk is sponsored by the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program. And this particular Art Walk is a joint Art Walk between Downtown Renewal, the artists, of course, and also featuring the PTA, local PTA for St. Genevieve School is going to be there and be doing some fundraising. The other thing that's kicking off this weekend is the Open Air Market. This is a brand-new event slash, slash feature downtown. It will be every Saturday and Sunday on the old Bank of St. Jen parking lot down here, and it is co-hosted by the Bolduc House Museum and also the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program. So the idea is to have more to see and do in St. Genevieve. And so the Downtown Renewal and the Bolduc, by creating this Open Air Market, it will have, oh, fresh produce from the Bolduc, like their herbs and things like that, fresh baked breads. It will have some items like antiques and things from some of the shops, individuals who may be interested in taking out a table. It's a very flexible program. You can come one weekend and not come again until August, or you can come every single weekend if you want to. So if you see that going on, if you're out and about this weekend, please stop by and take it in. It's going to be on the Bank of St. Jen parking lot, right across from the Lions Club Park. I also included the flyer there for the Garden Walk. Many of you are probably familiar with the Garden Walk, or maybe have even participated in it, in it with your families before, but this is one of the most beautiful events that's, that St. Genevieve hosts. It does offer people, for one price, the ability to go and tour some of the public and private gardens. So private individuals, as well as some of the tour homes that normally would charge you to be able to see, obviously the home, but the gardens, you can go in and see the gardens. And so that's a really exciting event, and it's coming up in less than a month. So we're doing a lot of advertising right now. The Tax Commission, the Tourism Tax Commission, with the funds that are raised through the, the overnight lodging guest tax. We've been running a television commercial on Channel 4 in St. Louis, the KMOV station, and that's been running pretty well every month since December. And I see a lot of people shaking their heads that they've seen it. If you haven't had an opportunity to see it and you would like to, it's listed on our website. So if you go to visitstjen.com and click on the media page, you can see not just the commercial, you can see that, but you can also see the other coverage that we've gotten. Last week, we had some coverage on the NPR radio station in St. Louis for some of the French colonial buildings here in St. Genevieve, and quite a bit of press coverage as well. So there's always something going on. As Martin mentioned, I did apply for a grant through the Master Gardeners Program. It's called their Beautify St. Genevieve Grant. Anyone can apply to it, and you can either beautify your own property, or if you see another property that needs a little help, you can, I suppose with the landowner's permission, you can apply to beautify someplace else, too. In this instance, I'm asking them for funding to, on the main street side of the building, if you stand and look at it, the side of the building has no windows, it's all gray, and then there's lots and lots of greenery, which is really pretty. But we thought it might be good to have a little more welcoming look to that side, and I didn't want to take it out of the regular budget. So I approached them and put a proposal together to, to add some perennials, some color on that bed, and also a feature that would say welcome. So it would be easier for people if you're coming up the street, especially from, like, the north main side of it, coming towards the Bolduc, that direction, that you could tell that that's the Welcome Center a little bit easier. It's easy enough to see if you're coming from the Bolduc or coming down Market Street. If you're coming the opposite direction, a lot of people pass it right by. So we're hoping that this will beautify it, and the Master Gardeners have really been very helpful. They also planted some bulbs there for us last fall. So if you've been by the Welcome Center, it looks a little prettier than it did last year at this time. It's because I've gotten a lot of help from local people who are supporting what we're trying to do. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to guess.
This Saturday is also the start of the Saturday with St. Genevieve, correct?
Uh, no, that will start on, it's okay, that, that will start on the same weekend as, as the Garden Walk.
Oh, okay.
And so the, so that's a good point, though, because if anyone is listening, I'm signing people up if they are interested in dressing in period costume, walking around being ambassadors for St. Genevieve. A lot of people have come forward and, and signed up either as couples, or sometimes, you know, a couple of ladies will want to sign up together and just walk around. And we're going to give them little cheat sheets in case anybody asks them a tough question like, what year was the Bolduc House built? Or something like that. And so this is just a way to engage more directly with the community and get more people involved. It's a great volunteer program, kind of reestablishing something that was done in St. Genevieve in years past that just hasn't been done in a while, and giving people a chance to get to know our guests that come to St. Genevieve. And, and really, really the bottom-line motivation for it is to, again, have more for people to see and do when they come to St. Genevieve. So if, you know, if you came down from St. Louis for a weekend in a B and B, maybe you're celebrating an anniversary or something, and you're walking around and you see these people dressed in period costume, chances are pretty good you're going to go up and say hello and have your picture taken with them. And what are you going to do? You're going to post it on your social media account, share it with your grandchildren, whatever it might be. And then, you know, that's a good way to get a little free publicity for St. Genevieve. So trying to do some things like that, that are good for the community, good for the visitors, and don't cost us much money. So with the help of some volunteers, we're trying to do more things like that, too.
Good deal.
Yes?
Did you ever contact Channel 2 about, on Fridays, I think, what Friday of the month, they come to community?
Um, I've been in discussions with an ad rep from Channel 2, and there's a little bit of give and take in terms of what they expect for that, but I'm working on that.
This is not a question for you, but a comment about Master Gardeners. What an amazing group of people.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Significant contribution to the image of this community.
A lot of these gardens, as you know, little, little corners here and there that would otherwise be mulch or grass that Dave would have to mow. Our beautiful little gardens.
That's actually a different garden club.
Well, they're, well-
Well, and to the Florida League Garden Club.
The Florida League Garden Club, yes. Yes. But some of them are in both.
That's right.
Pardon me?
For the Master Gardeners, there's still money in that grant?
They still have money to distribute, Master Gardeners?
I don't, I think they only do it once a year, not 100% sure.
Their answer is distributed.
But you, um, yeah. Yeah, because I actually asked for 2,000 and got one, and I'm happy to have my one.
What is the, the garden office at charge for that?
Yes, it's $7 per person, or if you have a group of five or more people, I believe it's six, and children under 12 are free.
And where would the, where does it start at?
Starts at the Welcome Center. They always have a big plant sale, too. So people who are looking for some really beautiful heirloom plants can pick those up. And people are, you know, like a duck on a dune bug, they're there at 9 o'clock to get those plants, I assure you. So it's, yes, it starts at the Welcome Center. You can get your tickets there, and you get a map to what gardens are included on the tour. And you also, this is another thing that the downtown merchants participate in. Many of them offer a special discount, so I think it's 10%. So you have this, you know, 10% list of the merchants who are participating, to get those people from the, just going garden to garden, to stop into the shops, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any committee reports? Okay. Then we'll go to the minutes of April the 10th, the regular meeting.
Move approved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. And here's the minutes for the closed session. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Move approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. Send them back to us. And the Treasures Report for March.
Move approved. How do you want to-
Second. I got a question. I know Frank said something, or whatever, but when we approve this financial report, that is also approving payment of bills. Is that not correct?
Ratifying.
Okay. I was just curious.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay. Now we're going to elect a board president, or pass out these papers to everybody, if you would.
Kind of vote for myself, but only once.
Did we take, did we take notes? Use the blank side.
We got nominations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we'll accept nominations.
Buck, or President?
All right.
Do we need a second, Ed, or a second?
Yeah, second. Okay.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
That was nominated.
Okay, no other, if there's no other nominations, we'll cease taking nominations. This might be pretty. So if you would like to vote, pass it back, or I guess, uh, nominations. But, uh, we, we need the voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. There you go. Congratulations.
Yeah, Mayor, just don't leave.
Okay, Resolution 201417, a resolution appointing Randy Rezika to the St. Genevieve Planning and Zoning Commission.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. Resolution 201418, a resolution appointing Shawna Zerwick to the St. Genevieve Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. And Resolution 201419, a resolution appointing Justin Donovan to the St. Genevieve Planning and Zoning Commission.
I don't know Justin Donovan.
Is that Bob Donovan's son?
Yeah.
It's Bob Donovan's.
He works on, is that the same?
Yes. Yeah, he's, yes, he's a volunteer fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
I've got one question, Mayor.
Yes.
You did talk to E20's individuals?
Yes.
They know.
Nah, I just opened the book up.
I did, or saw somebody.
He's going to call them, ask them to leave.
So this will take care of-
Congratulations.
-the recent elections and, and openings on planning and zoning. I think we now have a full commission, so.
Yeah, that's great.
That's great. We, we still have some openings on some of the other boards. I know Park Board still does, and, whereas in my belief would have one.
Well, we had one, and then, yeah.
So we still have some openings.
As far as the Aldermanic, the Exon, you're going to, you already got that read out?
Yeah, yeah, I'll pass them out here.
Okay.
Okay, Resolution 201420, a resolution authorizing the St. Genevieve Tourism Department to apply for a grant from the Marketing Matching Grant Program sponsored by the Missouri Division of Tourism, any amount not to exceed $6,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. Old Business Bill Number 3963, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Band.
Move approved. Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donna Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 3963 now becomes Ordinance 3915.
Thank you. Bill Number 3975, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag Incorporated in authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the renewal and land utilization of residual, residuals from-
Residuals.
Residuals from the wastewater water treatment plant.
Move to approve. Second.
I have questions.
Questions?
Yes.
Kerry's?
Okay, so the services from Metro Ag, they have a minimum of 400,000 gallons. Is that going to be met?
Yes.
Or do you expect that there will be less than that?
No, they originally started out wanting half a million gallons, because the tank is a half a million gallons. We have, there's a 500,000 gallon tank down there and a 700, or a 75,000 gallon tank. And so the purpose of them putting in a, a number, a number like that is their mobilization fees. They don't want to come and do 100,000 gallons because of the cost. So what, what we do is, we typically start notifying them, saying, you know, we, we've probably got about 60 days left of storage here on this, when the farmland's available. It, it works out because we, we can, we can apply this stuff prior to agricultural planning, and then we can, as the cycle runs along, then we have to wait until the harvest time. So I don't think they've ever came and did less than 400,000 gallons.
Okay. So I mean, that's what we're going to be charged for regardless, right?
Yes, and we have, we, yeah, we will-
But you know how much?
We will never let you get charged for more than they haul.
Okay.
We always have plenty.
Because I saw the other company didn't have a minimum number, so it was only going to be like 300,000, even though they have a higher per gallon price, it would be cheaper to go with them. But you know it's going to be 400.
Yes. And, and also there's, there's tanks across the road that we can make the difference of.
Oh, okay. They can do more than one location.
We'll never let you spend money on something that you didn't get.
Okay. Thank you.
So Kerry, if, if you run out of sewage sludge, you, you just substitute to lime sludge? It doesn't make that any difference?
That's, that's what they've done in the past.
Okay.
Because, like, they were a contractor that did this two or three years ago, when we had a, the weather didn't cooperate, and we got into a jam. And so they actually even brought a portable tank in, so we could fill it up. It was a 20,000- It was a 20,000 gallon tank, so we had a 20,000 gallon tank full, we had a 75,000 gallon tank full, we had a half a million gallon tank full. Uh, and so then the next time they came, uh, we had like 250,000 gallons, and then they just went over to their lime tank and started hauling lime sludge, so.
Does it make a, actually, does it make a difference to soil conditions of what they would put on lime sludge or other sludge?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, there, you, we're limited on putting two dry ton per acre, per year, uh, on land, unless we are trying to do an agronomical loading rate to apply for nitrogen for the consumption of the crops, so.
I'm the farmer who's receiving this. Does it make a difference which I get?
Oh, yes, 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 yeah, but there's, there's, there's farmers in the community that want both. There, we, there's never been a problem finding land for it. It's, it's free fertilizer. I mean, the, the sludge coming from the wastewater plant, the bio solids, it's, it's nitrogen. I mean, if you're gonna plant corn, it's great stuff. Uh, if you're gonna plant beans, not so good, but corn or fescue or something like that, it's, it's great. Uh, and then the lime sludge, you know, if you've got low pH in your soil, it's, it's great stuff for that. I mean, it keeps them from having to put as much lime on their land. And so, it's, it's perfect product for agronom, agricole use. It's great, great stuff.
Okay.
Do we need to do a second reading on this?
We'll just get a, oh, we'll just first, first.
All in favor of the first reading?
Aye.
Reposed? Okay, and yes, if we could.
All right, motion for a second reading, or second reading?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the second reading?
Aye.
Reposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 3975.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag Incorporated in authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of residuals from the wastewater treatment plant.
Move approved? Second.
Okay, little call, please.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donna Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes, bill number 3975 now becomes ordinance 3916.
Okay, um, other business. Uh, have a participant, okay. You missed, I'm on that. All right, we'll just do that now. Any, anybody like to address the board? Yes.
This the time, or I wait till after the, uh?
No, you can, you can, that was the time, or, yes, sir.
My name's Bob Brownie, I'm a 498 merchant. I'd just like to address three things. I'd like to thank Thoma for sending Brenda on down to her way, thank you. And second of all, when I was here the last time, I was headed out that door, and I was directed by the chief to go out that door. Well, going out to the back, Sergeant Poole followed me out there, intimidating me, making threats to me. I mean, that was, I was lured out there for that reason, okay? And I, I don't think that was very proper at all. I'd come here as a United States citizen to voice my opinion, and to be lured out there, to be threatened and intimidated by Sergeant Poole? Uh-uh. Don't. And the last thing I wanted to say to this gentleman, you had time to think about that. Would you like to redeem yourself and say, "Yeah, I screwed up, I shouldn't have said that about you, I'm sorry," or do I have to produce evidence to make you out a liar? I, I'm trying to give you a chance, just to say, "Yeah, I said it."
Um, I don't know what you're talking about.
Mr. Brown?
When you, okay. I don't remember saying it, I, all I can say is that, the bomb issue, if that's a big issue to you, I'm sorry.
Apology accepted.
And I, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Fair enough. And any of you between now and Sunday at 5:00 PM, stop by my house, sit on my front porch, and talk to me about this problem, because after that, Monday, I'm going to FBI now. You had your chance, that paper was submitted, and nothing. So, I thank you all, thank you, but I'm never coming back here again. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
All right, you can stay.
You can stay there, you don't have to, you can stay.
I can walk over here.
Okay.
I can talk loud enough to be heard, too. I'm okay. Good evening. My name's Pat Parker, and I live at 199 South Third Street. I thought tonight, with a lot of new aldermen on the board, or three, actually, was a good time to come and talk about a subject that's kinda close to my heart. Uh, to begin with, I know, or I've been hearing, that there's a committee that's been working for quite some time, studying the landmarks, ordinance, and the guidelines that are used to administrate that. And I've just come here tonight to ask all of you to please consider very carefully any changes that you make. Now, I'm not saying there shouldn't be changes, I'm just asking you to really think long and hard about whatever changes you make, because things we change now could have far-reaching effects on our town, and some of them might not surface right away, we might not be aware of them until all of a sudden it was too late. Um, I know one of the big bones of contention is, um, the siding. Now, I know one thing about putting siding, any kind of siding, vinyl or anything else, over a wooden structure, if there's any deterioration there already that doesn't get repaired or attended to before you cover it up, that can continue to deteriorate. I think I've seen that happen in St. Louis before. So, house kinda falls apart from the inside out, and by the time you find out what's going on, it's really extensive damage. So, that's why I say, you know, just consider all the angles of that. And, starting to lose my train of thought, you'll be happy to hear, uh, give me just a second. The next thing I want to talk about was the most important, and I, honest to God, I think I've lost my train of thought, that happens to old people. Um, gosh, I don't wanna give up.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, of course you can.
Mayor, what's, where, what's the status of that committee as far as land law?
Um, we're really close with, with some of the recent events, we've, we've, uh, you know, we're a little bit behind where we thought we were, but I would say in another meeting or so.
Just one meeting, I've got to, to rewrite the ordinance to reflect the changes that have been recommended, and have a meeting with that committee so they can see that if, what I have written is what they were talking about. Uh, and once they've done that, I'll present it to you. Uh, we plan to meet this coming Monday, but that's not gonna happen, so it's just a question of, of getting to sit down, find the notes, you know, and interpret them, and make the written changes in the ordinance.
Would you mind refresh my memory as far as who the participants are on, on that committee? You guys are, you two, right?
Well, I've been attending.
Yeah.
The mayor's been pretty much handling the building code stuff, but Alderman Ross is the Aldermanic representative on it, Randy Rizika, Frank Meyer, and, uh, Frank Rolf.
Okay, thank you, Buck, you're, you're all in luck, I've got my ideal back. The other thing is, I know one thing they're trying to consider, too, is what exactly is a historically significant building? Now, I know that the vertical log buildings that the French put up here is probably the most significant thing we have, it's what brings visitors from around the world to come and see this, it's something that was done well over 200 years ago, and with some maintenance, it's still functioning. But, about 1830 or 1840, we had an influx of German immigrants that came into this town, from which I descend, thank you. I can trace my ancestry back five generations, the people who spent a significant part of their town here, their life here in this town. Anyway, there's an awful lot of construction, and I don't wanna drag this out too long, but I'm thinking, like, say for instance, on, on Third Street, the restaurants and the shops and the things that are there, um, they've been in use for a real long time. Um, I can give you just a tiny little bit of history on one. I think all of you know where Kathy Walz has her little shop now, her pretty little dress shop. Uh, previous to that was a real estate company was in there, going way back to the 1940s, was, uh, Miss Rutledge's Drug Store. Um, a great, great grandfather of mine named Joe Verst had that building built, I'm going to say about 1868, I just know it was a little after the Civil War. He had it built, caused, called it the Jefferson House, I think he lived in the upstairs, and he, uh, ran a business in the downstairs. And as, the story was related to me, um, he saved up his money and got a little bit ahead, that's a novel idea in this day and age, and then he bought another building up in the next block, which was known at that time as the Kern House, and I think it was some kinda hotel, I'm not really exactly sure. Anyway, he fitted it up for a hotel, and named it the Southern Hotel, after one that was in St. Louis. And I think that original building dates all the way back to the really early 1800s, some say 1805, 1810, really early. So, it's been used a long time, because over the years, it was different things, owned by different people, but for at least the last 25 or so, Mike Hankins has had a beautiful bed and breakfast there, and he maintains it, and you just can't complain about the way he maintains it, it's beautiful. So, anyway, these buildings are all being used, even though they've been there a long time, but they have changed hands, and they've changed purposes in some place. So, I just think it would be an awful shame if we picked and chose and said, "Well, you know, this isn't really historical, nobody important lived there," or whatever, um, and lose the building, because they've been used all these years, and they're still being used today. Um, if you wonder why I take a personal interest in this, I, I said I can trace my ancestry back for five generations, I can go back three great, great grandfathers that contributed to this town to make it what it is today. Let me back up just a minute, one more thing about, like, the buildings on, on, say, Third Street and, and Main Street is the same way. When you walk into these buildings, when visitors come in and see them, you see these high ceilings, ornate in some cases, and beautiful woodwork, like the bars in the brick and in the anvil, nobody builds anything like that anymore, it's too expensive, lumber's too expensive. But, I mean, those are gorgeous, we, if, if they get lost, we can't get them back, that's for sure. And I think they're a big attraction for our town. I think visitors that come here, it's part of the, the quaintness of St. Genevieve, it's part of the ambiance, I think people like to come here and just kinda take a step back in time. Um, I don't think they come here for anything highly sophisticated, if anything, I think it's the opposite. It's like a friendly little restaurant where everybody talks to each other from one table to another, and it's, it's just an important part of St. Genevieve. Uh, just real quick to brag on my family, and then I, I'll sit down and leave you alone. Um, another one of my great, great grandfathers was Charles Beal, and, uh, he was instrumental in getting the Presbyterian church started. Uh, both he and the Joe Verst that I mentioned, well, the original Joe Verst, that got the hotel started, he passed away in about 1885, but his wife continued to run the place, and his children helped, and one of his sons, my great-grandfather, I find his name and Charles Beal's names in the history part of the paper every once in a while, they held some offices at the county courthouse. Uh, Joe Verst was on the, uh, the school board in 1915, when they had their first, when, you know, hun, uh, I'm sorry, 100 years ago, when they had their first, yeah, 12-year, okay, I need to quit talking. Anyway, the other one I can brag about was a Joseph Oberly, that started the Oberly sausage down on Main Street, and that's another building that's still in use. Somebody knew, somebody out of the family owns that building, but she's taken really good care of it, and she has a business there, too, so, I'm sorry, I took up too much time, I should've said "stop me" if I ramble, but, I love St. Genevieve, to me, St. Genevieve is all history and architecture. So, again, I'm not telling you what to decide, I'm just really begging you, you know, to give it really serious consideration, whatever changes that you make. Let's not lose too much of St. Genevieve as it is today, 'cause it's worth holding on to. Thank you so very much.
Mayor, I'd like to read that, you know, that Remenancy with the Harrow, and I remember those names in there, now they're, they're a little bit more significant.
Oh, okay. Come by my house sometime, I got pictures of all these people hanging on the wall.
Oh, do ya? Yeah.
Please do, I'm serious.
Anybody else address the board? Okay, under, uh, other business, the St. Genevieve Community Center is requesting closure of Progress Parkway on May the 31st, beginning at 9:00 AM till approximately 10:30 AM for their annual mini triathlon.
Move to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Question.
Reposed?
Too late. Is the police chief okay with this road closure? You think that would be important, right?
Before last summer, road closures on Progress were beautiful. Uh, with the apartments coming in there, it is somewhat more problematic. Uh, it'll be a modified road closure, 'cause we can't necessarily deprive people access to their house, but we will man both ends of that and allow people. Uh, we had a 5K run there last weekend, that was a nighttime run, uh, and with, the more of these that come along, you know, we're, we're instructing them to try to use one lane so we can keep one lane open for, for traffic, but it, it is problematic, but, I mean, we don't really have another solution, but, but it'll be a modified road closure, it won't be, it won't be a hard road closure that, that will restrict all traffic.
Hey, do they just close one, make it one way for the traffic?
Yeah, we asked last time that they use what would be, I guess, the eastern lane, the side lane, uh, so that we could direct traffic in from 32 to the apartments and out of the apartments to M. Uh, so, so they're using the, what would be the inside lane, I guess, essentially. Uh, it went in one ear and out the other with everybody at the last 5K, but, like I said, the more, the more of these that go on, you know, we'll instruct them ahead of time to, to make sure that, you know, I mean, at some point in time, they have to look into collision risks and whatnot, just using one lane with the number of people that they have there, as far as pedestrian collisions, you know, turning, turning around and running in both directions, but, uh, it would certainly be safer than a, than a vehicle collision with pedestrians, so. Yes, I am okay with it, we, we, we monitor those, and, and like I said, we try to staff that, uh, accordingly, so that, so that there's plenty of manpower up there.
And while you're up there for the garden walk, too, you're okay with, with that?
Yes.
For that one little block there?
Okay. With that, the St. Genevieve Master Gardeners are requesting a street closure on Market Street between Main and Front for the annual St. Genevieve Garden Walk and Plant Sale on May 17th and 18th.
Mr. Mayor, I've been asked to share some information from the Master Gardeners. Um, the St. Genevieve Master Gardeners are a 501(c)(5) not-for-profit organization. Um, the traffic on Main Street will not be affected by the request of street closure, only, the only resident on Mark, Market Street, whose access is to be affected, has some problems with that half-block street closure, and is actually, uh, looking forward to the event. Alliance Water will have access to their building from Front Street, uh, which will remain open, uh, as well as access to the parking lot of the rear of the Welcome Center will also remain open, so it's really just a, a very short, short section there. Um, and to just briefly address the grant program, um, the money raised from the garden walk through sales of, uh, walk tickets and sales of walk tickets and plant sales, that money is used to fund a grant program the Master Gardeners administrate. I passed out to everybody a brief summary of those grants from 2010, but just in 2014, $2,375 was awarded in grants from the Master Gardeners. $1,000 was awarded to Sandra Cabot at the Welcome Center for beautification efforts there. $1,000 was awarded to Mark Buckhite. His grant proposed continuing with the original garden plan for the Main Street Park that the city didn't fund. So, and then there was two grants to individuals that take care of downtown areas, gardens areas. So very good organization, minimal impact, and everyone is invited to attend the garden walk. They do have one new historic home on the walk that I think is generating a lot of interest and I'd like to thank Sandra for supporting the Master Gardeners.
Motion to approve. Second. Very well put and a great organization. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Okay. I would like to, oh, forgot this, the, here's the list of Aldermanic assignments that I came up with based on your input and if anybody doesn't want to or wants to switch or not happy, let me know and we can move some things around. So I think this was mostly from your input as far as what you felt interested in, so. And a few of those are just kind of ad hoc committees that will be counted, so. Okay. And with that, I would like a.
Let's switch.
Motion to go into closed session about personnel.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Rick, it's motion.
And Tom Seguin? Alderman Codwell? Yes. Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Oh, yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.